I'm very pleased to announce, we try to have somebody who's our representative at our meetings almost every meeting to come give us an update on what they're doing and what's going on and try to help keep us appraised of things that are affecting us. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Chris Hill enlighten us about what's going on with the county. So, come on up here.
Thank you, sir. I am so happy to see you all. Thank you all for coming out to see, not me, all of these guys. But I'm thrilled to be the warm-up act, so thank you for that. They asked me to talk a little bit tonight about the ETJ issue that's going on right now between the city of McKinney and Collin County, and there have been some changes, so I wanted to give you an update on that. Specifically, the ETJ, just a real quick version on that, is the extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is a bubble of territory around cities that the legislature has given the cities the authority to use some of their regulatory control in that area. So, you've got the hard city line, you either live in the city limits or you don't live in the city limits. But in 1963, the Texas legislature decided to create the ETJ, and the idea behind that... See if I can get that working out for you. The idea behind the ETJ was that the cities needed to have some limited control over the folks that live just outside their borders. And so, that has been the law of the land in Texas since 1963, and depending on the size of the city, that area ranges from about half a mile up to five miles. In the city of McKinney, it's five miles. Now, inside the city limits, cities often have significant and almost absolute control. Through their charter, through their ordinances, cities can pass many different rules that are there for the betterment of the community. In the county, counties are almost the exact opposite of that. We can only regulate what the state legislature tells us we can regulate. So, the state will tell the cities, "You can regulate everything except these things that we tell you can't." In the county, we can only regulate what we're allowed to. But really, now we have this ETJ, this area that's outside the city, but it's kind of in this gray area. What rights does the city council have to regulate the behavior and the land of the people who live in that area? That's kind of the background there. For the city of McKinney, here's a little map. The black lines are the ETJ limits, the red lines are the city limits. And so, you can see that in different places, there's more territory expanded beyond the city limits, that's the ETJ. Now, what's happened here in the last year and a half, last two years, in two different situations, two different cases, the city council has chosen to sue the county in addition to two different property owners, one Custer Road Stores and one the Arch Resort. Both of these are small businesses owned by a husband and wife each one, and they were starting their business and running their business in the ETJ. Now, I told you that it's kind of a gray area. Who controls the ETJ? It's not meant to be a gray area because there's meant to be clarity there, and specific items are clearly under the control of the city council, and other items are supposed to be under the control of the county. One area that's clearly under the control of the city council is the subdivision of land. And this was established, this was decided here in Collin County back in 2002, when the county and the city entered into an agreement and said that any time somebody, a property owner in the ETJ decides to subdivide their land, they have to plat that with the city council. And they have to go according, and they have to do that according to the city's subdivision regulations. The city has subdivision regulations and the county does too. They're very different, and you can understand that subdivisions in the city look a lot different than subdivisions in the county. So, if you're in the ETJ and you own 20 acres and you want to divide that into 10-acre parcels, three-acre parcels, or a whole bunch of one-acre parcels, you want to know whose rules do I have to follow? It's clearly established in Collin County in the ETJ, you follow the city's rules. But in 2014, the city of McKinney told both of these property owners that not only did they need to subdivide their property with the city, they also needed to get their building permits from the city. That had never been the case, not since 1963, not since 2002, until these two properties, the city said, "Well, we want you to get your building permits from the city." Now, they'd already gotten building permits from the county, they'd already started their projects, and they were actually already almost finished. In the case of Custer Road Stores, they went ahead and were finished. In the case of Arch Resorts, they were almost finished when they got this order from the city to stop what you're doing and come get a permit from us. Now, politically, it was made known that they were probably not going to get the permits that they were being told they had to ask for, but nonetheless, they were told, "Come get permits from us, and until you do, you need to stop." So, they found themselves, the city did in lawsuits against both of these entities, several lawsuits, and then shortly after that, the county was brought in as well. And so, city and the county have these two lawsuits. The update that I wanted to provide you today is that in one of the cases, Custer Road Stores, we got some resolution in the last two weeks. We did have the first hearing on that case, the final hearing, if you will, the final... Everything but the final orders. The judge had looked at all of the briefs that were submitted by the city of McKinney, by the county, and by Custer Road Stores, three different entities, and all of the attorneys. And the judge found that the Custer Road Stores Center did not have to get any permits from the city. He said they absolutely do not need to go to the city. They get all of their vertical building permits from the county, and now we're waiting to see what he does in regard to attorney's fees. Custer Road Stores asked for the city to have to pay their attorney's fees, and they're going to be filing those invoices here very soon, and presumably, the city will have to pay them back for their attorney's fees because they were victorious in that lawsuit. Now, that's the victory that the county was expecting, and we're very thankful for that. This was a very important issue to us from the very beginning because it's an important issue to the people who chose to build and to live outside the city limits. If that were you, and if you had a choice, I could buy property in the city or outside the city, and you purposely chose to go outside the city, you'd be surprised to find that the city's now telling you, "You have to live under all of their ordinances and all of their regulations, just as if you were in the city." But, you're not going to get any city services, you're not going to get city fire, police protection, and you're not going to be able to vote for the city council members that are making these rules over you. And that's a very significant conflict. It's a conflict that I have said from the very beginning, it needs to be remedied. We need to make, draw a very clear line here and let the cities know where their authority ends and where the county's authority takes over. Now, the Custer Road case would be very simple if I could just stop and go sit down right now and tell you the good news, but the judge went on to say that in this case, because it wasn't, the reason he found for Custer Road is because it was not a subdivision of land. He went on to say that had this been a subdivision of land, he would have found for the city. And he cited that 2002 agreement, which we signed, the county with the city, which gave the city very clear authority over subdivisions of land. And the judge's argument was, in that ruling, the county conceded all of its authority to the city in 2002, not just its subdivision authority, but all of its authority. So, he went on to explain that had it been a subdivision, he would have pulled that agreement in and he would have found for the city. And so, that's a significant problem for us at the county because even though it doesn't apply to this case, and even though this particular family doesn't have to worry about that, the next case might fall into that category, the next case that might come up years from now, the next family that seeks to build, and it might, they might find themselves wanting to subdivide their land. Let's say they have 10 acres and they want to divide it into five acres for one of their children and five acres for themselves. Now, they would have to get all of their permits and follow all the regulations of the city, and the question then would become, what else would the city be able to control over them? So, the county is in a very unique position. We're waiting for the final orders to be drafted by the judge. We've tried to convey to the judge that we think this is going to lead to an even murkier, even more troublesome solution than what he's trying to solve, but we're waiting to get the final orders, and we might find ourselves in a very unique situation that we win the case, the city has to pay the attorney's fees, but then we, as the winners, then have to turn around and appeal because we don't like one of the points in the ruling. So, we're waiting to see how he phrases his ruling. What he said from the bench gave us some concerns, but what he says in writing is really what counts. So, that's the status of Custer Road Stores. The Arch Resorts case is coming up in August, and just like Custer Stores, this family was building their property and was told about the city, they had to get city permits after they were almost done. In this case, the city is making the argument that this is a subdivision of land. Now, they didn't subdivide their land, they're not looking to take their 20 acres and divide it into smaller pieces, so they've argued it's not a subdivision, but the city has said it is because it is a RV resort where RVs will come in for the weekend and park and then leave after the weekend. They've said that that constitutes a subdivision of land. Now, not a legal subdivision, mind you, they wouldn't have any legal rights over the property. In fact, they wouldn't even have any electric or utility bills in their name because they would be weekend guests, but the city has argued that that's a subdivision of land. Presumably, if they are successful in that argument, they'll be successful in the next point, and they'll have all control over that property. And presumably, if they're not successful in that, then the Arch Resorts owners will win, as well as the Custer Road, following the judge's logic. So, these are the two cases right now that are pending. In addition to these two that have already been filed, we here in my office from county residents all the time, in fact, about once a week, I'll get a call from somebody who's building, who thought they followed all the rules, who is either in process or nearing the end, and then they're told they have to stop everything, come down to the city, and start to go through the city's regulations. So, it happens all the time. We are in constant communication at the county offices with the city to ask them to pull back, to stop doing this, it's an overreach of their authority, and so we continue to work on that. Now, we have cordial relationships with them. I live in the city of McKinney, all of the McKinney council members, I consider them friends, but I disagree essentially on this issue. I think that they're wrong, and I think that they need to change course, and so we deal with that in a very professional, political manner by going back and forth. I wish that we didn't have to deal with it in a judicial manner because at the end of the day, whether the city or the county wins, and whether, if the county wins and we ask for the city to pay for all of our legal bills and we're successful in that, as a McKinney taxpayer, I'm paying for a part of those legal bills, whether I do it in the county budget or the city budget. And all of you, of course, as taxpayers, are contributing to that too, at least on the county's side. So, there's a quick update, and I realize I've just thrown a whole lot at you, and want to be respectful of those that you really came to see tonight. Thank you for letting me join.
So, our objective this evening in this forum is to allow the candidates to represent themselves and how they would best serve their offices, and how, and we would like through the question process, both the questions that we prepared ahead of time and those that you can submit on index cards for round two, to be able to allow the candidates to distinguish themselves from one another. So, let me first of all, read the rules of engagement, so to speak. So, each candidate is going to have two minutes to deliver an opening statement, or they can be delivered by their representative, and then we're going to divide the form into two rounds. The first round will consist of six questions, and each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question. The remaining candidates, so if we're speaking of candidate A, candidate A will field questions one, two, three, through six, and once they have completed answering those questions, they will leave the room and candidate B will come in and answer those same questions. The representatives for the candidates will not be allowed to answer questions, they're only allowed to participate in the opening statement. Round two will consist of questions from the audience collected on index cards, so if you think of a question during round one, raise your hand, and somebody will drop an index card off with you, and you can write down the question you have. There is no intent to trap candidates or the representatives, or no gotcha questions or anything of that nature. We believe the questions are fair and representative of the topics that our membership is interested in and the public at large. Steve Mercer in the back, Steve, raise your hand and hold up a sign. Steve will be our timekeeper, and he will hold up a flag up, and I appreciate you to abide by their time limits. So, at this point, let me introduce our candidates, starting here immediately, well, on your right, we have Carl, and Carl, I'm going to try to pronounce your last name, Clement?
Sitz.
Clement Sitz. Clement Sitz. Carl is running for Allen City Council, place two. To his right is Naomi Emmett. Okay. Naomi is running for the mayor on the seat. To her right is Curtis. Curtis, I forgot your last name.
That's hard to remember, it's Allen.
Allen. This will go down in the books. He is representing Tabasum Ahmed, who is running for Allen City Council, place two. And to his right is Steve Terrell, current mayor of the city of Allen. Thank you for being here, Steve. And, let's see, I'm supposed to have a representative for Shirley. Do we have a representative for Shirley? Shirley Mangram is running for Allen City Council, place two. She fell ill, and she was going to try to send her campaign manager or treasurer to join us, so they may join us later this evening. Any questions about rules? Okay, so, let's start with Carl, and the other candidates will be escorted out of the room. Yeah, let's actually, let's do the opening statements now first. So, Carl, why don't you do your opening statement?
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. My name is Carl Clement Sitz, and my wife and I have been married for 33 years. We've lived in Allen since 1994. We have five kids, four grandkids. I am a certified public accountant. I have multiple degrees in finance and accounting, and for the last 30 years, I've held leadership positions in accounting organizations and corporations, really all the time, but so people, I'm home here for a long time. For the last five years, I've been fortunate enough to serve as a school board trustee for Allen ISD. Prior to that, I served 16 years as an appointed trustee on various city boards. I spent eight years with Allen Economic Development, four years with Allen Parks and Breck, and then four years with Community Development. In addition to that, I volunteered for a lot of other different positions on the construction, volunteer for Collin County Habitat for Humanity. I am a community emergency response team member since 2016, and then a whole host of other volunteer activities. I've participated in the police academy, Sipsons Police Academy for Allen, Sipsons Police Academy for Collin County, and the fire academy for Allen as well. I hope to utilize the skill sets and all that I've obtained over my last 22 years with the city and the school board and basically continue my volunteer activities as a city council person. So, remember Carl Clement Sitz, Allen City Council, place two.
Thank you, Carl. Next, we have Naomi.
Good evening. I'm Naomi Emmett, and it's a pleasure to be here today, and I thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to first tell you a little bit about myself personally, then I'd like to tell you why I'm running for mayor. I'm the chief fiscal officer at the Johnson School of Engineering and Computer Science at UTD, and I've been married to my husband, John, for almost 23 years. We have raised three great kids in Allen, where we have lived for the last 15 years. Our two oldest kids are in college, and our youngest is a junior at Allen High School. My husband and I have been incredibly blessed by the opportunities we have had in this country and this community. When you start seeing that something could be improved in your community and you have the opportunity to do something about it, it's time to get involved. I know that many of you here certainly relate to what I am talking about. When we began to understand how out of control our federal government spending had become, how government sought to control every aspect of our lives and our health care while eroding our individual freedoms, we wanted to stand up and do something about it. And when we began to see how much government was encroaching in our lives through high taxation and strangulating regulations, we stood up and said, "Enough is enough." My family, like many of yours, decided to join together and remind our politicians that they have taken an oath to uphold our constitution and that they are the servants of the people and are accountable to us. In much the same way, I look around our city and I am seeing there has been tremendous growth, and our local politicians keep pressing for more real estate development while all of our property taxes continue to rise. I also think we should be looking at term limits for our local politicians. These are just a couple of the issues that I care about for our city because I believed in principled government, not situational ethics. And I think it's just as important to tell you about how I think as it is to tell you who I am. I love our city, and I want us to continue to be proud to live here, to feel safe and to do business here and grow together as neighbors. The smaller the footprint of government, the more fiscally responsible it is, and the more term limited our politicians are, the more responsible and transparent our local system will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Tabasum. Justin?
Curtis.
Curtis Allen.
My name is Curtis Allen. I may know a bunch of you, if you ever shopped the garden department at Home Depot, I was a horticulturist for that, for the district, and spent a lot of my time up there, so if you've ever seen me out there, that was probably where I've seen you. I'm speaking for Tabasum Asad Ahmad, I'm sorry, and this is her words, okay? Good evening, everyone. My name is Tabasum Ahmad, and I am running for the Allen City Council, place two. I would like to begin with some of my personal history, followed by my positions on matters that affect our citizens. My family has lived in Allen for the past 14 years. We have a 10-year-old son who attends public schools here in Allen. In addition to having an accounting degree from Indiana University, I am also a small business owner and have extensive experience working in large IT projects for Fortune 500 companies. I have served the city of Allen as a board member on Keep America Beautiful, Keep Allen Beautiful. I also volunteer for Feed the City, an orthodontist organization, and I've organized food and clothing jobs from my own home. I have been the social secretary for a cultural and social organization called Best. As an immigrant, my family and I have worked very hard to build a life for ourselves here in this country. We love what this country has given us and cherish it. We did not become citizens of this country through natural birth, but through hard work to gain this privilege. It is an hour ago to give back what has been given to us. My vision for Allen is to maintain and protect the high quality of lifestyle that our citizens enjoy. Allen has experienced tremendous growth in the past few years, and that growth continues. As population continues to grow in our county, the transportation issue will become very serious. We need a plan very quickly to prepare for this future. If I am wicked, I will work with the mayor, my fellow council members, along with local and state legislatures to address and formulate a solution to this issue. Allen also must continue...
Next, Steve Terrell, your opening statement.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to be here at Allen Area Patriots this evening. I do want to tell you that me and Sally, we've been married over 41 years, and also, we have lived in Allen for 37 years. We started our business here 31 years ago in Allen, Texas. I've been an independent businessman for over 41 years. We have two children, we raised in Allen Independent School District, and the dearest thing in my life right now is I have two grandchildren, which is outstanding for me, and so I'm very enjoying it. I will tell you, one of the proudest things I've done in the city of Allen as the mayor of the city of Allen is we have become a triple-A bond-rated city. And what that means is, is that's like an 850 FICO score, okay? That means your reserve funds are up to par over 100 days, like we run today. See, everything we have in the city of Allen, we're lowering our debt rate at the same time. We're actually down to about $906 per capita, which is one of the lowest debt rates in the North Texas region, by the way. And also, we're probably one of the safest cities in 2016, but in our fire department, unlike a lot of other cities that we have, are all param medically trained firefighters. So, that's a really unique thing. And I will tell you some of the other things I've done, real quick, I see he's holding up his thing, and we've been on it. Some of the things I've put on the ground in the meantime is, we've put four fire stations, one central fire station, a senior center, an outdoor skateboard park, roads expanded to three lanes, six lanes, 50 miles of hockey and bike trails, event centers, two major parks, 15 neighborhood parks, city hall, golf courses, library, and many, many more things. And in the meantime, doing all of that, we have lowered the tax rate 24.6 cents from 76 cents down to 52 cents as we stand in a current day. I would like to tell you that I think our major concern today is our corridor along the 121 to CBD and the North Central Highland Freeway is the expansion of that, putting good quality commercial breaks on the ground to help us maintain ourselves through build-out and to keep lowering our tax rate for many years to come. Thank you very much. I appreciate being here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finally, can we have a representative here for Shirley Mangram? No. Okay, so, at this point, we'll proceed with questions for Carl and other candidates can be escorted out of the room for a few minutes. Okay, so, reminder, Carl, you'll have one minute to answer each of these questions, and Steve in the back will be holding up five parts. Steve, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. So, Carl, first question. Are you in favor of term limits for the Allen City Council? If for or against, please state your reasons.
Okay, great question. I would say that I'm not opposed to term limits, and I think every time you have an election, if the voters have the right to choose whether or not you should continue. And I really think that if you're doing a great job and you're in the middle of some major expansion and the council is really gelling, I think you have that, you should have that right to continue.
Question number two. What are the three most important issues facing Allen today?
Okay. I would say the first one is growth, right? We look all around Allen, it is changing overnight, it seems like. There's new development, there's increased traffic, I'm sorry, increased traffic. So, one of the things I would say is make sure that the growth that we're seeing is smart growth. Right now, our tax base is 75% residential, 25% commercial. If we develop that corridor along 121 North Ridgeview correctly, we'll get a commercial base in there, you can get some mixed use, and make it more of a 50-50 mix. The other thing was transportation, right? It's making sure we stay ahead of that growth with local streets and make sure we work with our regional communities and partners to get some good sound solutions. And the other one is just continuation. The city is doing a great job. You look around, and this is a city to be admired, and I think that based on my experience and my working relationships with many of the city council and many of the city leaders, I can do just that.
Thank you, Carl. Question number three. In regard to population growth, what responsibility does the city have to ensure that residents have enough water, given the reality of future droughts and the decline in lake levels?
Oh, that's a great question. So, I would say that we are part of the North Texas Municipal Water District, so we're one of 13 member cities, and I think that we continue to work with our other member communities to make sure we have an adequate water supply and then promote conservation. I know there's some talks that right now, when we do conservation, we're really not seeing that low rates, but I think that so long as the member communities working together, we'll ensure that we have a great water source and in wastewater treatment for the long-term future. that we have a great water source and in wastewater treatment for the long-term future.
Okay, question number four. It's kind of an open-ended question, so think about it. And what legislation would you enact, repeal, or revise? So I think this refers to city ordinances.
Wow, that is a good question. So there's one, let me think about that. Well, I know there's one at the state level right now, House Bill 2, where they're looking to put a revenue cap on each of the cities. I'm all for local control, right? I think we should be able to manage that. As you heard the mayor talk a little bit earlier, that we've been able to really provide a high level of services and lower the tax rate for each of the 20 years. I come from the school district side and we've been doing that same thing. That over the last three years, we've lowered our tax rate by eight cents per hundred dollars. And then we're preparing our budget for next year and we're looking to take another two cents. So I think keeping local control.
Okay, that segues into question number five. The city council has lowered the tax rate for several years, but because of increased property valuations, taxes actually rose for most property owners. What would you do to help lower the actual tax dollars that an Allen resident pays?
Well, there's no easy question, is there? It's hard because we, I think collectively between the school district and the city, we are lowering our tax rate each and every year. But what's happening is you have a lot of people that are moving to North Texas. So we're paying more taxes because we're seeing an increase in our property value. And so I think what we need to do is we need to make sure both from the school side and the city side that we take a look at that. We want to make sure that we're providing the same level of service that our residents have grown to expect, but also be fiscally minded so that we're trying to reduce the tax rate where we can. Like the mayor talked about before, we are doing it on the city side and like I talked about, that's something we look at on the school board side each and every year.
Okay, final question, question number six. Thinking in terms of the strategic plan, what would you like to change that is in that plan now?
Okay. I would say that I like the strategic plan and I like the comprehensive plan of the city. I would like to see, instead of change, maintain. Because like I said, right now, one of the biggest opportunities we have is that 121 corridor and making sure it's developed right. Let's make sure that we limit the amount of apartments that are coming in and especially the size of the apartments. And let's make sure it's smart development. Because like I said, you've got a huge opportunity to create a lot of daytime employment. And Allen ISD and Cullen County are building tech centers. You leverage all of that and bringing corporate campuses from a tech perspective. And then as far as traffic, make sure we can try to feed that traffic along the freeway and lessen the community.
Okay, thank you, Carl. That was your last question. Please, Carl. Carl, could you ask Naomi to step in?
I will.
Welcome back in the alley. So you can stand with me if you'd like or sit, whichever you prefer. I've got six questions and you have a minute for each question, so take your time. Okay, first question. Are you in favor of term limits for the Allen City Council? If for or against, please state your reason.
Yes, I am. I believe that, as I stated in my opening, that it should be a term of service and not a career. So I am definitely for term limits and I will do everything I can to implement that. I've spoken to a lot of residents in Allen that are also in favor of this. And so I think that it definitely is something that, that needs to be done. I think that, you know, we, we need to be very cautious that we don't become career politicians and lose sight of our focus. You know, and our country was founded so much on the fact that you went, you served for a while and then you went back to the fields, basically, and you went back to your homes and, and so you contributed and then you left your service. So I do, I don't want to serve forever. I want to serve Allen for one or two terms and hand it off to, to the next person. So yes, I'm definitely for term limits.
Thank you. Question number two. What are the three most important issues Allen faces?
That's a loaded question. To myself, I would say property taxes. I'm going to put water in there and then transportation, I think is going to be an issue. So those are the three that I see. Do you want to make some? So the property taxes, we always hear that they're going down, but my pocketbook, when I paid my, my checkbook out, I paid $89, which if I pointed it, if I did it correctly from 16 to 15 to 16, that was 7.9% increase. So I am for the effective tax rate. I've looked at that. And had we actually implemented the effective tax rate, we wouldn't have paid the 52 or 53 cents this year, we would have paid the 49 cent. So, and it would have been like a 1.67 increase as opposed to 7.9. Transportation is also with the growth. We have brought it upon ourselves because we have grown so fast that now we do have this issue of transportation. We are going to have to address that in the future. And then as far as wa, oh, sorry.
Thanks. Question number three. In regard to population growth, what responsibility does the city have to ensure that residents have enough water, given the reality of future droughts and the decline in lake levels?
Okay, there's my water question. Water is an interesting thing. I think, okay, as an, as a, as a person who believes in the individual and having their own rights, I don't like being dictated to me that I can't use water. I think that a responsible citizen understands that there's been a drought period and says, okay, I'm not going to water my lawn every single day. But to encourage neighbors to tattle-tale on others if their lawns are being, to me, that's just not acceptable. As far as what the city has to do with it, I think it is something that we're going to have to face. I think our water prices are definitely going up and we need to reexamine, you know, what, what the North Texas Water, you know, Commission, how can, what are we going to do to make sure that our prices stay at a better level and not continue to rise? Because I only see them for rise, rising up right now. So I think that the council is going to have to face this issue and it's going to be a serious one, I believe.
Thank you. Question number four. What legislation, this would be city ordinances, would you enact, repeal, or revise?
Okay, that's the first I've gotten, that question. I think that, well, I don't know if it's an ordinance or not. I think that, that, well, the question was asked about the solar panels. And I know that there's an ordinance out there with the solar panels. And I think that that is one that we also need to look at because again, I think it infringes on individual rights. They say you can have it in your home, but only in a certain way and such. So I think that one might need to be revised a little bit because it's going to be an energy saver for us. And I think that the taxpayer needs everything they can with that. I know that there, I don't know if it's an ordinance, but I know that there's something wrong with the sidewalk in front of your house. My neighbor has informed me of this. That if you call the city of Allen, they'll say, yes, I'll send somebody out and you pay half the bill and I pay half the bill. And again, I think we just need to know where our, where, I don't know if it's an ordinance, but I, it just, we got to change some things with that. And then of course with the trees and stuff and who has control over them.
Okay, question number five. You alluded to this earlier, Naomi. The city council has lowered the tax rate for several years, but because of increased valuations, taxes actually rose for most property owners. What would you do to help lower the actual tax dollars that Allen residents pay?
And again, I'm just going to say the effective tax rate is the way I think that we need to implement it and we need to look at it very closely. It's more transparent, it's simpler. Right now, to be quite honest with you, I don't know how they're, they're establishing my tax rate. I just know that if you go to the budget, it tells me it was lower, they have no other reason, it doesn't tell me anything in there. So I think that whatever we do with the taxes, we have got to start communicating to the people. The people have a right to know why the council does things, how it is doing in its equation, and where, where, where the information is coming from. Because as taxpayers, we can't take on any more. And I don't want to take on any more. We have very healthy reserves in our city. And a lot of times it's boastful, yes, we have great reserves. And I say, okay, but why? Some of those reserves should have been back in the pocket of the taxpayers. So I think with the tax rate, I'm for the effective tax rate. And if you, you know, need to ask me more questions about that, then please email me because I have been responding to questions like that.
Finally, question number six. Thinking in terms of the strategic plan, what would you like to change that is in the plan now?
Okay, well, this mysterious plan, which I'm just learning about, first of all, I think if you're going to have a strategic plan, you need to put it out there, you need to get it out into the hands of every single citizen. To say I am doing a plan and not tell the people exactly what is in that plan is wrong. I have heard a lot about the strategic plan with local government, I mean, local development, the 121, they've already built that out. And I've been asked questions and to me, it's like, why are you asking me the question? You've already made the plans. The developers are already out there, there's already stuff going on. There's a mobility plan, 2030. That one I would definitely change. That one, in my opinion, if I'm reading it right and those little red dots are correct, we're going to be seeing, you know, things with transportation that some of us might not want. So I think that if you have a plan, we need to definitely get it into the hands of the people. Just saying it's on the website is not enough.
Okay, thank you very much, Naomi. Deidre, Steve Terrell? Welcome back, Mr. Mayor. So we've got six questions, one minute per question. Steve will be your timekeeper at the back wall there. Question number one. Are you in favor of term limits for the Allen City Council? If for or against, please state your reasons.
I will tell you real quick, you know, and I know the former mayor sitting back there in the back, Joe Farmer, and he can remember when I suggested this and probably the review back in 1994 about term limits and at that time I was basically, it was all turned down during the charter review at that point. I've been through five charter reviews since that time and not one time has one citizen, one person ever suggested it other than me and the term limits. And if anybody ever came forward to me and suggested that, I'd be more than happy to put it on the docket, okay? And but nobody's ever suggested it to me, nobody's ever asked me to do it. The second factor is, is, you know, when you lower the tax rate 24.6 cents, you know, it takes a steady government to do that because bureaucracy will take over if you know there's term limits. If I can sit there and wait out that term of that person, then bureaucracy knows that and they know how to do it. And you know, government's always built, bureaucracy is, the important thing about government is always to expand bureaucracy.
Question number two. What are the three most important issues Allen faces?
Wow, I'll tell you, probably one of the most important issues is we've got to get together with the county and everything else and figure out a transportation situation, not whatever that is, roads, mass transit, whatever it may be. But it's going to have to be more than just the city of Allen doing it. The second thing is, is that I think I do believe our water system's under control now. I think water will always be an object, but the, the supply of water, getting it from the lake to the actual city will be more of a supply than the, actually the supply of the water. Because the water supply, when we get Bodart Lake in, will be good probably for another 50 to 60 years. And probably the third thing is, and I'm one of those, as I get older, I really think that we have to concentrate on lowering the tax rate and consistently lowering that tax rate because all of us empty nesters, we get tired of paying taxes.
Amen. Question number three. In regard to population growth, what responsibility does the city have to ensure that residents have enough water, given the reality of future droughts and the decline in lake levels? So if you'd like to elaborate on your, your.
Well, I kind of did, oh, I'm sorry. I kind of did when I just spoke about the lake Bodart coming in and that probably is going to take us probably the next 50. But I do believe, and here's the unique thing about City of Allen, we're not just, we are that supplier. We're the one of 13 owner cities of the North Texas Municipal Water District. And so we are one of those that share the debt of the Municipal Water District and everything else. We have a, we have two court members from the city of Allen that set on that Municipal Water District. I do think that is probably, from my standpoint, I think it's one of the key factors that the city has to do. We have to supply water and we have to supply sewer also. Don't forget that. When you bring the water up, you got to send it back home somewhere and that's through the sewer system. And we do both. The North Texas Municipal Water District basically handles both of those situations, water, sewer, and solid waste. We also take away all the solid waste. The plant that's out here in Plano on Custer Road is part of the North Texas Municipal Water District and the dump up in Melissa is also belongs to the North Texas Municipal Water District.
Question number four. What legislation, for example, like a city ordinance, would you enact, repeal, or revise?
Oh, wow, what legislation would I enact, repeal or revise? You know, I would say that I don't really know. I've dealt with just about any kind of legislative they've ever sent down from Austin, sent it up from Austin. And, but I will tell you that we've been in Allen, we've always been able to deal with most all of the legislation that's sent to us. I think that our regime down there in Austin right now is probably pretty good that represents us up here. So I don't see that very many objects we would run off or not actually, you know, not make set within that comes out of Austin. I don't have anything that I would actually send back home at Allen.
Okay, this harkens back to a point you made earlier regarding the city tax rate. Question number five. The city council has lowered the tax rate for several years, but because of increased valuations, taxes actually rose for most property owners. What would you do to help lower the actual tax dollars that an Allen resident pays?
Well, I would just keep doing what I'm doing, basically, and that's decrease debt and also try to, and let me explain something to you. Our water and sewer fund, real quick, is about $6 million in debt. It's completely built down. That debt is being paid off as we speak. We'll have a debt-free water system and nothing fine. The city of Allen has got to lower its debt rate tremendously over the last 20 years overall. But I would tell you, and that helps reduce that tax rate also. But I will tell you that on the effective tax rate side, which is coming through Senate Bill 2 or HB 15, either one you want to talk to, the effective tax rate today, if we'd adopted that basically in our current tax budget, it would reduce your tax rate on $100,000 on home, about $1.15 a month. And if you, so we're getting close to that. And when I began reducing the tax rate in 76, from 76.6, my whole game was to get to the effective tax rate, which became a buzzword out of this, out of the legislative session two sessions ago, which was two, three years ago.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. Just for the audience, the effective tax rate is the rate that a taxing entity would need to set so that your tax bill, that is a revenue collected by the taxing entity, is the same as the previous year. So if your tax valuation goes up 10%, the tax rate has to go down 10% in order to keep your bill the same. So that, that.
Only M and O.
Correct, only on maintenance and operations. Finally, the last question, question number six. Thinking in terms of the strategic plan, what Thinking in terms of the strategic plan, what would you like to change that is in the plan now?
Well, I will tell you, I've always been a big supporter of the comprehensive plan. I was a minor part of it back in 1984, when it was actually created, and then is adopted in 1985, believe it or not. I've been very much of a supporter. We redid the comprehensive plan basically every five years, and the citizens of Allen are the ones that designed our comprehensive plan, and every five years are the ones that designed it. Each time, we redid the comprehensive plan. I've always been a big supporter of it, and if you'll go back and look at the original one in '84, that was adopted in '85, and you look at the current one we have today, you will see that the city of Allen has been built by the citizens of Allen, not by me. We've allowed that to happen. As the comprehensive has done, I accept what they give us, just like when they pass a bond program in the city of Allen, I accept what the citizens of Allen give us, because it's citizen-driven. They drive the bond, they drive the comprehensive plan, I just adopt it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please go Steve Carroll. Okay, we're going now to proceed to round two. If you haven't, if you fill out a card and have a question written on it, raise your hand, and one of our compadres will pick it up for you. And we will be taking questions from the audience that can be posed to any particular candidate or to all candidates.
Are the questions, we can't ask every candidate the same question, but these are supposed to be more targeted, so I don't have a, like, a target name.
I can compose a question to a particular candidate. Okay. Okay. So, Carl, luck of the draw. What church or place of worship do you attend, if any?
Since we moved here in 1994, we've been members of St. Jude's Catholic Church, and we're adding members today.
Thank you. Naomi, do you want to answer that question?
We have been members for 15 years at Faith Orthodox Presbyterian churches, very close to the Presbyterian Church of America. It's a Catholicistic form of government, and that is in Garland, Texas. John is an elder, and I am a church pianist, and do some women's fellowship there, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I've been a member of the Christ and Servant Lutheran Church ever since it started here in Allen, Texas, many years ago, and I've always told my pastor, if you want me to leave, put me on a board.
This is a yes or no.
Yes or no. Carl, would you bring DART to Allen?
That's not a yes or no question. Not as a full member, member, Steve.
Naomi, would you bring DART to Allen?
Also, not, not as DART as we understand it as real.
Steve Carroll?
I'd say no, not as it stands.
Thank you.
Due to the recent controversial bathroom bills that have been proposed and were enacted by cities across the nation, I'd be interested to know if you think any action or clarification by Allen government would be worthwhile?
Is that a yes or no?
Do you believe, what is the question, do you believe that any action will be worthwhile?
Right. Do you think any action or clarification by Allen government would be worthwhile?
Is it yes or no? Yes, I think clarification, yes.
I would say no.
Legislation passed about cities, no longer can place ordinances stopping chicken coops. How do you feel about it?
Well, that was, that actually came before city council, six months ago, and I think what they said is that if you were so far away from your next-door neighbor, then it actually did pass in the city, and it's property owner rights, and in most communities where you have an HOA, it would be prohibited anyhow.
Naomi, you're...
I agree that it is property owner rights. I have friends that own chickens, not in Allen, and I strongly suspect that my HOA would say no to it, but I actually have purchased a lot of eggs from people who, my friends who have had the chickens, and they are phenomenal, so.
Well, as part of that ordinance, I will tell you, it has to sit about 10 feet off the property line, so in matter, it has to be basically in the center part of your yard. And by the way, you can also put your solar panel on top of it, too.
What is your stance on the Collin College proposal? I think this is referring to the bond proposal. Total cost, too high? Phased approach versus all-in-one, wide variance or potential tax impact? So your stance on the $600 million bond proposal?
I was going to rotate so that we saw that in different places. I would say that I am a big supporter of Collin College. It's, in Allen, in Allen High School, 50% of our students, when they leave high school, will attend Collin College at some point. So in the expansion across the county, as the county grows, yeah. The one thing I'm not so sure of is, I think we could have done a better job of promoting what was behind the $600 million. But for me personally, I'm a big proponent of education, and I did vote yes.
I have attended Collin College. I was doing that simultaneously while I was going to UT Dallas to get all of my core credits that did not transfer after 20 years to finish my degree. So I am a supporter of Collin College also, and I'm a big supporter of students going back to school and gaining their education. However, $600 million, no, and I did vote no for it.
You know, I have to tell you, I'm a big supporter of Collin College, too. I think their last geo-bond program was probably about 1985, believe it or not. And I will tell you, they spent that pretty wisely overall. They have a very low debt percentage overall. We've just got to make sure who's in office, to make sure who's spending that money if we give it to them. I think they could have done a better job on the explanation of the bond, like Carl said, yes, I do. I think they should have advertised it, and let us have more of a choice on the ballot. Thank you.
This question is for Naomi Emmett. Please explain how your lack of voting locally has shown your prior interest in our community.
First of all, I have not lacked of voting. I am a voting member of the society. I have voted for presidential at the national level, and I did vote locally a couple times, not in the, I know you guys have the thing, so it hasn't been in the last few years, and I did vote for this election, of course. I think that, first of all, I'm not alone. I mean, there's a lot of voters that have not voted at the local level. I will take responsibility and say that I have been wrong, and my attention span, or my attention has been gotten by my property taxes. I have been lackadaisical, and I have gotten what I deserve, and now I am here to make a change. I will say that I have spoken to about 10 or 15 people who have never voted locally before. Guess what? They voted this week. So I think we need to get it out there. So I'm not going to sit here and say I'm not at fault. I am, and I apologize for that, and it's never going to happen again. But if you look at everybody's voting records also, you know, you just, you can't, I never said to our 57,000 voters in Allen that they are not voters, because they are. They have taken a stand at the national level, and I am taking a stand at the local level now. And you know what? I'm talking to people that have not been interested before, they are interested now, and I have not said to them, shame on you. I have said, good for you, you've gone out, and we're going to make a change this year. Thank you.
Thank you. So this question is, has a net overbuild caused water and transportation issues? I think the crux of this question is, has the growth rate in the city been overpacing the rate at which we're providing water and transportation infrastructure? Steve?
I will tell you, probably the major thing that's did, affected the water in the city of Allen is conservation. We never expected people to conserve 30% of the water in the city of Allen. I think that's the major thing that's affected us. I think the supply's good, I think the way to get it here is good, everything is good about it, but we never expected it. And that's why, when we get into the take-or-pay situation, is what we do, that's what affects Allen and Plano, Mesquite, Garland, all of us. And that's what we're dealing with, with the board of directors, and the mayors of the cities are all working through a process to get to a better system with the take-or-pay system. And what I mean by take-or-pay is in the city of Allen roughly, because we use, and I'm going to make it real simple, if we use $2 this year and only $1 next year, then we pay for $2. That's what it means. Because the supply of water has to be to the maximum resource, okay? They can't say, okay, well, you got this much, we're going to go and bid this, no, it's got to be to the max. So that's what the take-or-pay system comes to, and that's what we're going to work through the process to change for the citizens of Allen. And the reason we need to change that is, is because the city of Allen, for example, last year, we paid $1.2 million more for water than we did. Plano paid roughly $13 million more for water than they used. Okay, so that, you just multiply that on that. But for Frisco and McKinney, it's a great asset for them right now today.
Carl?
Yeah, so Steve has addressed the order, and I agree with that. From a transportation side, you're always going to be lagging someone on your transportation, right? Because you don't want to build an infrastructure and waste taxpayer dollars until you know the need is there. And that's not a simple solution either, because it's not something, if we want to expand San Maria Burn, totally 121 or 75, we can't do that alone. That's a state, and in some cases, maybe even federal. So it takes a collaboration of local communities and state officials, and it changes, and sometimes that just takes time.
Okay, can you repeat your one? I'm sorry.
Sure. Has the, the net overbuild, that is, the rate at which we're growing the city, caused water and transportation issues?
Yes. And I think we talked about transportation and some water on the 101, so, yes.
Great, thank you. Having to decipher some of your writing. I think we may have already answered this. How do you think about the DART in Allen? I think we've addressed DART already. This is unfiltered. What is your stand on the Kitty Hawk Transmission Line and Substations Proposal? Would you support any proposal to build transmission lines and substations in the city limits of Allen?
I'll take that one. So I could tell you, I'm totally opposed to it, because where they're planning to build that, or where they're proposing to build that, high-power lines and substations, is in our most valuable real estate, which is 1,400 acres just to the south of 121. And there's a couple of reasons why. One of the biggest substations they're going to build is right next to the property where Allen ISD is going to be, build a steam center, and where Collin College is going to build their technology, Career Technology Center. And not only that, if you put all this high-power lines all along that Ridgefield corridor, you're going to limit some of the development of the land out there, and that is pristine land. The other thing is, from what I gather, is most of the needs for that high-power lines is for development north of 121, so why not locate the lines where the demand is?
I also oppose it, but I oppose it for a different reason. I think the citizens have spoken, they don't want it, and I think we need to listen to our citizens in Allen. And I think they haven't been heard all the time, and they say no, and so I think that it's a no.
I'm probably going to get shot right about this minute, but I want to tell you some things you may not know about this transmission line. We have been very successful. I want you to understand that the PUC is probably the largest kangaroo court in the state of Texas, and you go down there and you actually do not succeed very often. But I will tell you, through our transmission and through our letter writing, for over 2,000 citizens that have written letters for me and to down there, and for over the other groups, the landowners that own the land, the school system, the businesses that are up there, we are slowly but surely succeeding. The thing we are exceeding on is, is we have learned that they did not have enough adequate routes to show on the map at the time. So what's happening now is, is they're going to force them, maybe, to go back to the drawing board and relook at the situation. The supply is actually going to the north, up to McKinney, the northern part of the Co-Curve area, and so we're battling at that point, too. So maybe we can take it out, or maybe not. We're going to see. But so far, we got it still, Naomi.
Thank you. If anybody has thought of any questions you want to ask, raise your hand, and somebody will drop the card off with you. So, let me phrase the question this way. If you are a member of the Republican Party, Mr. and Mrs. Candidates, please raise your hand. Thank you. A lot of interest. To establish an effective tax rate for the current year, that is, a rate which keeps someone's tax bill in Allen the same as last year, on MNO, $500,000 would be, would need to be shared, sheared, I think, from the budget. So in other words, let's say we want to not do 5.3, but 4.9, okay, that is the effective tax rate. And so we need to shave $500,000 out of the budget. Naomi, what would you cut out?
I would cut out special projects. I would just cut out special projects.
What are some of the special projects?
I think that, at this point, special, like retail that we just don't need, there's just a lot of, I think that we need to pause, we need to look at our tax burden, we need to look at our debt service, and we need to just pause on, on some of the building that's going on right now. We have a convention center that we just broke ground on, and yet we have an Allen Events Center. I think that just because we live in a society where everything is at our fingertips, and we say, yes, we can, you know, at a push of a button, does not mean that we have to have it. We have to be cognizant of the fact that, yes, we are in a good time right now, economy-wise, but we know history is cyclical, and we know that there could be a downturn. We have a new president that's implementing new things, and we just don't know how our economy is going to react to some stuff. So I think, as far as special projects, I would say anything that's new that, that we don't need, we need to pause, and we need to really take a look at what we are doing with our tax dollars. And if that means that we implement the effective tax rate, and you all, as taxpayers, get to keep more in your pocket, then yes, because you all, if you, if we're going to ask you to tighten your... tighten your belts during times of trouble, the city needs to tighten its belt. And we're not there yet, but I think it's foolish of us to continue to spend. We just, we just need to use caution. We need to use caution and be physically responsible in that.
Thank you, Naomi. So this is our last question from the audience, to be addressed to all the candidates. What is your opinion on the plans to construct more apartment complexes in Allen? We see several new apartment complexes being built in the recent years. What would you do to ensure that we don't end up with excessive apartment complexes in the city? Too many opportunities would create overcrowding issues in our public school system and drag down our ratings. What would you do to prevent that?
I'll tell you, you know, there are certain pieces of property around the community that, you see some of the apartments going up along Brace Central and things of that nature. Those were zoned in 93, basically, and they have a right to be built, but we have changed the land development code enough to make them require to have, they were actually 27 units to the acre. We've cut it down to 16 units to the acre because of the requirements of the lodges and quarters bouches and things of that nature. We've also, coming up to the new style of apartments, I guess is what we'll call them, they all have internal corridors, they're all air-conditioned internal corridors. Most of the apartments today in the city of Allen, we require them to be 70% single-bedroom, and they also have to be, there are no three-bedroom in the lounge anymore. We are changing that. We're actually pulling out, and it's gonna come down by pretty soon, we're gonna pull out the apartment requirement in the land development code.
I'm not for it. I have heard from several citizens that they are concerned about the overcrowding in the schools as it is. My kids, my kids have attended, but Linus right now is in a high school that has seven, almost 7,000 students. 15-plus-hundred are in his class alone, and the night before school starts, he sits down and he devises a plan on how to get around. So I think that we need to address that. And with that said, I don't know if anybody has read or has gotten this, but it came to my, my email, there was a new NICE report out, and it was talking about the top public school systems. Allen's not on it this year, and I want to know why. I drive every day from Allen through Plano into Richardson, and let me tell you, it is apartment complex after apartment complex after apartment complex. I have spoken to several people, I spent almost two, two-and-a-half hours in the evening responding to emails from you as the concerned citizens. You all do not want it. Maybe not in this room, but from what I'm hearing, they do not want any more apartment complexes. And again, the council, the chain of command or the organizational chart is the citizens of Allen, then the council, and I will bring that back. The citizens are going to be heard if I am elected mayor. I give you my word, and I promise you that that will happen, and we have got to start listening. So I am opposed to the apartment complex, any more apartment complexes in Allen.
Well, one, one thing I gotta say is, I never like to go in opposition to a statement, but Allen ISD is one of the top 10 school districts in the state of Texas. There's no problem, there is no doubt that apartments is something that we need to maintain. Part of the reason I'm running is because I'm very concerned about land use and the swapping of land use, because just like the city has quarterly demo for reports, we do on the school district side as well, because we're always trying to plan on what the impact's gonna be to our kids and the teachers in the classroom. So do I support, you know, apartments serve a need in the community, but I'm concerned that the apartments seem to be getting larger, be closer to the street. And if there's something, like the mayor was saying, we could do with the land code to maybe change that a little bit, I think we're all better off. And like I said, we've got a lot of land that's prime land along 121. Let's go ahead and make sure that we stick to the 2030 comprehensive plan and develop it more as a commercial base and mixed-use base, because I think that's, I think that's where we need to go.
Thank you.
I've talked with Naomi about her faith base, and I appreciate what she shared with us recently. And Carl and Steve, I appreciate what you have shared tonight that I didn't know before. And I would also say that Shirley responded, and she is a long-time Baptist in the city of Allen, and has had many leadership roles in that church. And also that Ms. Ahmed is a practicing Sunni Muslim. And my question now is to the three of you, since they're not here, is how does your faith base determine the decisions you make?
Naomi?
I think it's critical. Well, to me, it shows my, it is my character. Being born and bred by a pastor in the Midwest, it is very rare that I do not pray on the way to work. It's very rare that I don't seek God's guidance in what I do. And this decision to run against Mayor Terrell, who has been a long time incumbent, was not one I made lightly, and it was not one that I went into without prayer, and I felt led to do it. And, and so I think that, for me personally, it is very much who I am. I personally don't, don't know how a person goes through life without having some belief in, in God. And so I do hold Christ as my personal Lord and Savior. I made a confession of faith when I was 13, but I was raised in a family where the Bible was always read every single morning before we went off to school, and in the evening at the meal table. And we have instilled that faith in our children, and they are all professing Christians, and they all work in the church in their own areas. They're off at college, and they are participating in churches there, and Linus participates in our congregation. So to me, it's very much who I am, and it's just who I am.
Carl?
I would say my faith is my foundation, right? I think one of the things that I've learned over the years is servant leadership, is always looking out for the better good of the community of your family. And you know, there's that I am second. I always look at it as, I am probably fourth or fifth, right? And it's because, you know, I've been serving the community for a long time, and it's because I love the city and I love being able to make a difference. If at some point in time I think I could no longer make a difference, that's when I'll stop serving the community.
If I'm not mistaken, I think that the question was, how Christianity affects my life, and I will tell you, there is not one decision that I do not make, that my Christianity raising does not help me make that decision. I make every decision based off of that, and I will always make Christian decisions at that moment.
Thank you. Each of our candidates, Steve Carroll.